I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are the Board of Education norms, which are available for anyone to peruse. And now we have the approval of the agenda for open session.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda of the July 18, 2023 Red Heart Open Session meeting.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the MSBA Monthly Report for July.
Welcome to the July edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at MSBA Summer Summit held in Branson June 16th and 17th. The summit began with an inspiring keynote presentation from Dr. Jacqueline Sanderlin. Dr. Jackie is an accomplished school principal who has become famous for her straightforward "why not?" attitude, which has led to dramatic improvements in some of Southern California's most under-resourced schools. Her passion for guiding young people has garnered national recognition. Dr. Jackie said that in addition to the first four Cs, community, collaboration, capacity, and connection, there is one more C that is critical to student success.
You have to be creative. You have to be innovative. You have to be different. You have to think about how do we recreate what we've done to make something fresh and new happen? Because we are serving scholars who are innovative. They were born into innovation. They don't even know what we did. They don't think the way we did. They're gonna have jobs that have not even been created yet. So we cannot afford to use old tactics on innovative youngsters. Not only that, innovative young people who are working around with us. We have to be brave enough to say, we gotta do something different. Because if we're not creative, we're gonna lose the first four Cs.
The Summer Summit also featured an awards luncheon, recognizing outstanding students such as the 2023 statewide Belcher Scholarship winner, Shontal Agbayfun of Republic High School. The luncheon was also an opportunity to celebrate board members who have achieved additional levels of board certification beyond the basic state requirement levels and have achieved the designation of advanced, master, or distinguished certified board member. At the conclusion of the summit during the delegate assembly, Ruth Johnson of the Ray Moore Peculiar School District was sworn in as president of the Missouri School Boards Association after serving as president-elect for the past year. She told board members attending the summit, it's important to understand the challenges our schools face right now, but it's also important to celebrate accomplishments.
As we look ahead into this next year, we will face many of the same challenges that we've had in recent times. We must, however, look forward, be better, and focus on our why.
MSBA state officers elected during the delegate assembly meeting held at the summit include President-elect Patty Questonberry of the Ozark R6 School District and Vice President Jonathan Russell of the Neosho School District. As the summit concluded, Senator Carla Esslinger delivered a resolution originating from the Senate floor recognizing the outstanding contributions of outgoing MSBA President Ray Murphy.
Every once in a while, you have an opportunity to recognize leadership and to recognize people's contribution and just the giving nature of time and resource and energy for something that obviously you're not paid for, but because it matters to the heart and it matters to the children in his district and across the state. And I want to say thank you so much for your leadership.
MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the delegate assembly that will be meeting this coming November. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the advocacy committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The advocacy committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the delegate assembly that determines MSBA's positions on issues. Those position statements express to legislators, policymakers, the public, and the media where MSBA stands on issues affecting public schools. Be part of the process by reviewing the current positions, discussing them with your fellow school board members, and proposing changes. Delegates will vote on proposed changes at the Fall Delegate Assembly this November in Kansas City. Registration will be open starting July 10th for the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials to be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, along with a lineup of general session speakers you won't want to miss. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in August for the next MSBA Board Report.
Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda.
Hi.
See, before we vote, does he have any...
Yeah, I need to abstain from this. I have someone on the substitute list.
I've got to tell you now that you say that. Am I looking at the... Is that his second cousin? It's not.
Sorry.
In the window, let's look at it.
On your side? I also see a second cousin. First cousin's spouse.
First cousin.
Right, that's what mine, which is your second cousin. So I think that's okay. It's just the first cousin and his or her spouse. It's gonna be okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to... Sorry. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Motion and second besides Janine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six over one. Next on the agenda. Guidelines for public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of a meeting. Per policy, BDDH-1, public participation at board meetings. The following rules will apply to the public comment portion of the meeting. Public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once. Each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Discussion will be limited to items on posted agenda. All speakers must provide name and address prior to speaking. And if there is insufficient time for everyone to speak, the board will encourage participants to submit their question in writing or utilize the process for putting an item on the agenda. I do not have any public comments. There's not much public here. So we're glad you all are here. Next, we have the report of the brand-new superintendent, Dr. Paul Taylor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Try a bit, something a bit different, the same thing. Bailey keeps teasing me with all of these fantastic presentations from Columbus. Jump ahead and try the superintendent's report of the agenda as well. I thought it was important to remind ourselves why we're here. Our mission and motto is gonna be a part of the superintendent's report. The board just reminding us what our mission and motto are. We say them on a daily basis or visit them on a daily basis here at school. But it's good for the public to see as well. Something we focus on, new teachers. It was a scavenger question, I think, when Dr. McParton was sitting there. What's our mission and what's our motto when that official works? We're gonna keep that on the superintendent's report. Next month, we will have the 2023 School Tax Rate hearing, Tuesday, August 29th. That's a change. Organizing office does move closer to the end of August to allow us to collect some more information from Linda and do some calculations and get that information correct. We will. So if we move that to August 29th. By the tax rate hearing, we'll be prior to the maiden board meeting right at 6:30, followed by the meeting of orders. Location is where we currently are, St. Emily High School, RW Thomas Library, Rejection Room, 715 Washington Street, in St. Emily. Just a couple date reminders. Since we won't be meeting until August, school will have started. So I wanted to remind everyone that first day of school is August 21st. We will obviously have some professional development days. Teachers will be back much sooner than that. Teachers as well, I forgot. Open houses, Door Bailey and SGB, Pre-Golden Place, August 16th. Bloomdale and St. John's, Oak Street, Good Friday Open Houses, August 17th. Middle School Open House is August 24th, and High School Open House will be August 30th. Wanted to take a moment here to talk about Hepatitis and I think it's pretty anticipation for everyone returning. They have been hard at work cleaning, updating, maintaining, doing annual maintenance, looking into they have been working, obviously, hard with several facilities they've rented. One of the things that we focused on, and we bring them some snacks with private SG, was getting some things done that we could in-house. So Dr. Boyd, Dr. Dix, and Mr. Carl went out together to go down and look at the boys locker room and see, put their heads together and see what we could do down there and what it costs. They have been furiously scraping and painting, I think the plumbing. Locker's doing tomorrow. Plumbing was supposed to start this week, so I haven't been there. So I hope they have started over the start of the week. We used to have those old... Do I have to turn it on? A pole that came down from the ceiling with showers all around it, and students would stand around. That's a dated shower setup. So we cut that out and they're putting some stalls in for the showers. There was a cage down there to keep some items secure, and washer and dryer, they pulled that out because it just brings all the... They came up, were physically responsible, and really the most expensive thing was the lockers, which they always are. But the coaches, the athletic director, and the administration came up with a great plan. It's really fantastic. Simply, I think they pressure washed the whole... They took everything out and then pressure washed the whole thing, and they painted the ceiling a white color, and put LED lights in there. They're listening to us, it's 10:00. So I want to thank everybody for all the inscrivency.
We need to go on a field trip.
We do.
Right.
My people are looking happy to thank you.
Next on the superintendent's report is the Annual Communications Report, and I will turn it over to Ms. Otto.
No one might be in the...
She's the jet. So I'm just gonna give you a quick update. Typically do this, I think, in July every year, which might seem a little strange because that's the first month of our fiscal year, but that way we get to finish June with all of the communications we do district-wide. So some of this is going to be quieter than June, but I'll give you the overview anyway. So I am the Communications Director for the school district. That includes all internal and external wide communications, strategic and crisis communications, public relations and marketing, all of the branding and style at the district level, media relations, community relations, and then social media coordination as well. Social media coordination specific to the district-level accounts. So we've got regional-level Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, and Twitter. But then also sort of overseeing how any other, like ancillary accounts, can become official. So there are all of these accounts out there in the ether, you know, since social media first began, you know, back in the 2000s, early 2000s, mid 2000s. But if it's an official page, this is just a little side note, it'll say official. It'll have our logo, meaning that they've gone through those steps to become it. And that's actually something we're working through right now as well. I want to give you a quick overview of the committees that I'm a part of or that I have a hand in. The ones that are listed here doesn't necessarily mean I'm a member, but I will help in some way, whether that's note-taking or just kind of helping make things happen. Once the ball gets rolling, might just be sort of design element, things like that. So I... Pushed Caesar up just even faster one, but I think I probably spent more time. My mom's probably given me a year because we've done the CSIP revamp. We all had a review of that last month. Facilities Committee, so that's the district-level facility committee that the regional watch was in January 2020. That committee has met a couple times this year as well. The Calendar Committee, which is mainly based, which is by the calendar. The Dragon Advisory Team, this is the Superintendent's Advisory Team. I don't know, now that we've got a superintendent, if that's going to change at all. Are you going to keep that type of committee? It's included, or included in that committee are people from throughout the district and employees. So it's a mixture of certified staff. And then we also, when we created that committee, made it to where the individuals who first raised it up and created who would like to be on this committee. And then we made sure that it was our own people who had been in the district for a while, people who were new in the district, people who were forming us in their first district, people who came from other districts. So that way we got a... Each person had different perspective. So that's the committee that meets four times a year, every month. And we'll come up with an agenda, things that are new initiatives for the year. So available this time of year, the change to the contracting days for certified staff. That was something we discussed this week. And that committee is helpful because a lot of times, our communications are gonna be written or there's going to be video, or it's gonna be like a... Sometimes it comes to PD Day where maybe not everybody's coming in to look at the year that. So it's that FaceTime that we get with those folks, who are they representative? They're gonna go and talk about those conversations, and it's nice being able to have that FaceTime, have those conversations in person. Because when you get their questions in real time, they're getting those answers much faster, and then they can go back to stuff, you know, with their buildings as well. And that's not to say, I do also want to mention, we also discuss the agenda with the principals before we... And say, hey, these are the things that we're going to talk to all of these folks about, the principals and the directors. And we say, you know, everything we're going to discuss tomorrow, and we'll let you know. So then that way, they're in on the conversation as well with the thing we do have that FaceTime prior to the administration. Community Services Forum. Resources to Recovery. So this is a community committee based on our community services forum. So all of these community groups meet together once a month and talk about different services, right, for the community events. And then within that larger group is a smaller subgroup, resources to recovery. And they're... Well, right now, it's allocating fund to address opioid abuse and prevention within our area, but... Larger, they work toward providing services for folks who might need help in that area. Specifically within our county. So we do help with that. We have a few events that are coming up this year. Stephanie Gegg is part of that group, so is, she's our social worker. Vice President Heel, so is as well. And I believe you're the, you the chair of the resource? But... That's a committee that we're very excited about being able to say that we're working with them in this area. Part of, when we discuss at that meeting, hey, you know, nationwide, there's this opioid epidemic. How can we then localize, how can we fix that here? How do we start maintaining strides? And those, you know, a lot of that, we talk about rehabilitation, but we also talk about prevention. And that's really when we start talking about, okay, what can we do at the school level? What are we already doing at this school level? How do we make sure that our community knows that? How do we reach families, especially when it's difficult to... Add more events in the evening when they have so much going on. So those conversations, we're having them. And then the last one is the professional development committee. But I think the commission, we found the rehabilitation event, and that's going anywhere. And that'll be the first time that we're going to do that. So that'll be a... We can all drop by. At some point and kind of see how that's going, but we're excited. I know we've got some good ideas coming up. And then I just put in a quick picture of the CSIP that y'all already saw that last. So we have email listservs. We have an all-employees email listserv, and then a listserv by building as well. Thrill Share, which is the program that we've used to communicate. It does phone calls, texts, emails, push notifications. It does live feed updates to our websites. It's also with... Anyone mention this year, so text is low tonight, I'm sorry, because we are revamping that for employees. I'm just trying to get it to where our program essentially updates every evening. Because, you know, in this day and age, we have crisis communications. When something happens, we just say, maybe not a topic, but we want to know that nothing happened in everyone's day and day. We want to be able to not have to go to touch to a downrange group, maybe we have to make sure we put opportunity to take control of the highest reward. You know, I just want to be able to pull up Thrill Share and say, well, you know, go to Thrill Share and text this one, and it's good. But that's a much longer conversation because of the way that our programs work. So I think we're at a point now where it really can be quite seamless. So new this year, we're gonna have text lists for not only just the all-employees, which is what we had this year. It would update each day, a list of all employees' contact information that now will be broken down by facility as well, which would be helpful. And then, yeah, R2. So that's the e-newsletter that, when I first started it, it went out every other month. It's sort of like five things you need to know. And last year, we had a goal of doing it every month, and we did that. Yay. But we're last minute, but we did it. Exter on communication. So again, you've got Thrill Share out there. Emails, push notifications, live feed updates. I do also want to mention, can you click it again? Okay, perfect. So also this year, again, texting. We used to have a sign-up for text messages for families and community members. The problem with that also is, again, it's not seamless. It's you're signing up in one area. Well, you're signing up for texts, it's one more thing you have to do. So we changed to an opt-out system instead of an opt-in system. So many districts have already gone that way. New laws changed back, you know, I'd say 2016 that allowed districts to do so. So that was a change we made this past year, and it, I think it went really well. So essentially, how that works is if our families are within our Power School system, parents and guardians, the first two contacts are automatically uploaded. That phone number is automatically uploaded into the text lists and then, you know, broken down by building and district each evening. Now, you can opt out, of course. And if you opt out, you just won't receive the texts anymore. But that doesn't mean that your phone number won't be within Power School or that you won't receive emergency phones, things like that. Those are different. SGR2 app, that's not changed this year. Dragon Alerts, that was the Google form where you would go and just sign up for texts automatically. But we've switched that up. It's just now signing up for athletic texts.
I have a question. Usually we have a separate meeting, so I don't know how well structured they are.
So I looked at the past and how we had been, and it was always listed as the traditional, when you start at 7:00.
Right.
And it said, tax rate here will occur before the regular board meeting. So the tax rate hearing will start at 7:00. For us, for our purposes, since we moved it up to 6:30, the tax rate hearing will start at 6:30. And the public intervention, there'll be any discussions in the evening too, in the overall session.
Because in our content, which may not be the content, it does say seven, so maybe that was just a carryover.
That's carryover.
Okay, so it really is 6:30.
Six seven.
Yeah, that's my thought. Okay. To cite, I don't know. No. No. You'll do it.
While I'm on the subject of taxes, have you spoken with Mrs. Wagner? So Governor Parks assigned SB 190, which can, allows counties to opt in to not raising property taxes on seniors. We were told at the Summer Summit, there was some desire for the governor to veto that bill and call a special session to clarify what dictates senior. Is it 62? Is it 65? Is it 70 and other pieces? How are they going to figure out who, what the age of these people are? And so I believe the assessors often have struggled with saying, this person is this age versus not to help with the collecting information. So maybe we're having a conversation with Mrs. Wagner about it, because he signed the bill. Like this is before.
Signed it, yeah.
He signed the bill. So now the county can opt in to doing that.
So when Linda heard about that, she gave me a call and talked. Did she express some of the same concerns that you just expressed? And asked me to pass on the heated information that we received from MSBA or from the National Security Department. I thought that would do that. Her concern with various and everything that you just talked about. I would speak for what she'd be able to speak about. About her chapters associated with her job, but she is more aware of that.
It's not, so the county's passed it, but the county can opt in to do it. I believe the commissioners make that decision, so. Or if we put it on the ballot. If the commissioners don't pass it, only 5% or 10% of the previous election must sign about this initiative, basically, to get it on the ballot, whatever, so.
And Linda expressed to me, we were just talking about it, it is a problem for her, but it's even a bigger problem for the collector. She assesses the property no matter what. The collector has to determine what they collect. So it's a problem across multiple offices.
It's like a credit they get, basically, they don't...
Is that just on a residential?
It's primary residency. That's another one.
And primary only. Not your, you have a secondary, like a lake house, that doesn't count.
Right, it's just your house.
But I don't know if they collect the information. You pay your taxes on it no matter what. I don't know if it's listed as primary, secondary. Who's 65? Who owns a trust?
You're right, that's, you're getting a trust.
There's no income limits.
And statute doesn't dictate that. It's why they really wanted it to be vetoed, so they could clarify what they actually do on this bill.
A senior living on Social Security who could really benefit from this has the same benefit as a senior who has $10,000 in money.
Where do you find that tax money to make up for difference?
Real legislative information, you know.
Anyway, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. They were hopefully gonna veto, but he did not. He signed the bill into law, so.
That is the end of my report.
All right. Well, next, with the Profess Chamber Report.
Yes, Bailey covered quite a bit of this already, but I didn't want to touch base on projects. Since we were out there, Bailey took that drone video and this picture. The cover has gone over the green tiles there, so that's up, and inside the clouds are... So it really is starting to...
Um, so it really is starting to come together. Uh, we are scheduled to do a walk-through, uh, to get a punch list together on November, July twenty-fourth. Which I decided, I hope that doesn't be the issue. Uh, and then Monday, July thirty-first, there's a tentative move in front of the office staff. So they'll start all the things over.
They're excited.
And so that's very important. Mr. Ganniger, I suppose, that perhaps one of the next couple more meetings, we can hold an hour or two. Uh, which I thought was a fantastic idea. Let us say a little tour here. Ask questions. Maybe get some community members out there.
That's a great idea.
Uh, St. Jemmy Middle School, um, we had a bid opening on Monday, July eleventh. Um, I am happy to say we are pleased with the results. Uh, the middle school project came in somewhere in the neighborhood of one point five million dollars is the estimate to start this process. Of course, it went up and ended somewhere just above one point seven million. Uh, the bids came in, uh, the total, uh, some contingency funds built in there, just over a million. So right on track with that. Hopefully groundbreaking will be late August, early September, depending on the, the pieces that brought through. Trying to judge the thinking, which I mentioned, Rebar is being refreshed probably in that. So that project is going to, uh, get started shortly. We're going to discuss parking in just a moment, uh, which this project will impact significantly, uh, so.
One last question. Is that going to impact? I know, say, impact. Is it, is it going to be a lot of noise for the, the classrooms right there?
So, yeah, I, some teachers were in the hallways today for a professional development meeting. And they, they mentioned, what's the noise going to be like? It depends on how soon we can get the older, or the lowest level floor that's going to be in our championship. I think that's going to be the major heavy machinery work. Of course, there's pouring concrete, getting all that stuff. And then there's going to be some pain running sometimes. Dr. Mercer is really good, uh, with coordinating and working with people. And I have spent the last six months working with Matt Dave, our site administrator. He's fantastic. He's very responsive and wants to do what's right for the kids and he's demonstrated for the kids. So he'll do a good job of handling this in that situation.
Okay. Cause what, I, the lower, to the lower the middle, classroom inside the tops, counselor's office?
Well, counselor, uh, Mrs. Meyer's office moved downstairs. Uh, and Mr. Greber is going to have to probably relocate.
Camp with her.
We might camp with her, but he's also my great counselor as well, so he spends some time down there. Uh, Early Childhood Center, uh, we have a planning meeting on Thursday, July thirteenth. We have some significant site concerns. So we purchased the six acres, which was known as the McCann property. And then we worked with, um, Mississippi Line to purchase five addition acres. The architects placed it, architects and engineers placed it on the site originally really high, close to, uh, the Meyer House there at the top. And we started talking about utilizing that land that had been purchased. Uh, so the floor plan was flipped and it was moved towards, uh, the substation. Uh, as we did that, that hill gets steeper and steeper, so we ran into perhaps creating some retaining walls. So at our July thirteenth meeting, uh, we discussed the best place to put that. Taylor Engineering was there, Rockford Destruction, K-R-J architects. Uh, and it's going to be a balance of taking dirt off the top and filling in where that's going to even out the best and, and because that's going to make the most sense physically. And cause less dirt to remove. If we move it all the way down, there's going to be a significant amount of dirt that has to be done and retained also. So we've now flipped it back and we're looking for the correct location. Taylor Engineering is currently working on how much dirt do we take off and where is that buried? Uh, the floor plan is, is good, um, barring any differences from flipping it back over. We wanted, as you drive up that road, to see it sitting there with the green panels in the corner and just be really. Flipping it back over now has us driving around and not going to get that removed. Of course, if Mississippi Lions are coming to help us install a road out of sixty-one, coming in from sixty-one to eighty. Um, so a lot of moving parts, uh, work plan is pretty much set, but we'll work on that in the side of the challenge.
So you're saying right now it's facing highway sixty-one?
Right now it is, so it's an L shape. And right now, this part of the L shape is facing highway sixty-one. So it's kind of facing.
As Colin, I mean, indicated, construction cost, is it all delayed coming down at all?
Colin has been very, um, positive about where we currently are. They're, they're higher than we were.
Of course.
Uh, but they have, depending on, on what it is, and the day that you ask them, they will say, well, this is, it's really coming down. It's back where it needs to be, now this one, you know. It just depends on what you're talking about.
And they're, um, proactive with purchasing those things whenever.
Absolutely.
Another one of the things he told us on the C-Bars, we can get a warehouse full of steel and it's cheaper than buying it.
Almost immediately, when the project starts, in both Black Pig and Colin's head, they're going, what are we going to get ahead of? In order to avoid any slowdowns in construction or bumps in the road that were waiting on materials. Um, I, I, I think we waited a couple of days, a couple of hours, seven weeks ago. But as they demonstrated out there, they're two weeks ahead. We weren't supposed to be until the end of August. And I, I knocked on wood the entire time. They said we were two and three weeks ahead because I knew something was going to happen. It was set us back, but they maintained that schedule. They've demonstrated it. It's beautiful out there and I imagine it's better to be there. St. Jemmy Elementary has the middle school picture up for some reason. During that planning meeting on July thirteenth, uh, we walked out in the parking lot. This is going to lead to the next conversation about parking lot. And in talking to the building, the building, uh, construction. That building is going to be a significant impact on the facade up front. So we pulled up some drawings and I got them some drawings of where the building footprint was going to be and we started having discussions. During this meeting, uh, we clarified where it was going to be, how that was going to impact parking, how that was going to impact student drop off and pickup. Uh, Taylor Engineering was at this meeting and is going to look at our parking lot and see about restructuring our parking lot and perhaps putting a bus lane in and a curb to keep cars away from the bus lane. Not that there won't be walkways in between where people can get one together, just to make it a little safer. They're going to look at those options. I don't know if that's quite real, but with the setup that we have there. But we're also talking about expanding it a little bit towards the road, uh, straightening those parking spots out. I don't know if you've been down there. It's easy to let the elementary parking lot, how tight it is.
And I'm looking at it here as I see where the new addition cuts in. I mean, an already small parking lot is coming to be very small.
So all of those conversations are going on, um, in addition to what's next on the list and it's additional, uh, parking conversation. So that's the progress G R eight on all four of those projects. Lot of balls in the air. And the families were working with the people, the elementary architects, they've been responsive. And very professional to work with. The past has brought more of the stuff. Any questions about any of the projects or projects?
So the parking lot, how, in, in the middle school, is it going to be impacted with placing that? Are they going to try and keep as many spots open as they can?
So we have to balance it because the construction would have to be in there.
Sure.
And the equipment has to be in there, but also you can't have teachers parking down the road, so I'm going to address that just a second.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Get the teachers to.
General service.
Yeah.
Right? Trolley.
Yeah. Pick them up on the trolley.
Trolley.
Yeah, pour in a cart.
All right. Parking lot updates.
Okay, so these bids started this parking conversation. Uh, we have some significant crack issues in the asphalt parking lot. Uh, Mr. Carl received bids, uh, from three different people. Uh, as you can see, the low bid comes in from Zell Pro. This is not using any sand in the cracks. It is just using rubber in the cracks, which they say holds up longer. Right? Zell Pro came in as a half fifty-four, is that ninety-five?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five. Right, so that would be my recommendation to you when I spoke to Mr. Carl. He's confident in that board and in your work. So that would be my recommendation of going parking lot back with the evidence. Zell Pro, anybody new, is that?
It's, um.
And, and well, well, man.
To rechange this name.
And.
Aaron, Aaron and Jenny Brown.
So there you go. Okay. I thought so. Cause they sit on the bottom of the road. Okay.
Yeah, I need to type that properly, so it's just their, their company name is Zell Pro now.
Yes. And you need a motion to. Now.
For the crack fill, yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Zell Pro for parking lot crack repairs.
I'll second.
The motion, I'm second to approve the bid from Zell Pro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So that led us to, in fact, on middle school parking. The, the two companies that bid on crack repair, also do, um, asphalt repair and overlay, said that your parking lots are really overdue for an overlay. So then Navy and I started having conversations about, does it make sense to spend money on crack repair when the next year it needs an overlay? So he said, I think we need to go ahead and present those bids to the board so that we need to go down the gates and then he doesn't see us overlaying that parking lot, fixing the cracks that were there, because each one of those projects had a current bill on it. We could go ahead and take advantage of that, knowing that we are not going to fill cracks in parking lots there. The front parking lot is going to have a lot of construction on it, uh, for the elementary, but it doesn't make sense to fill cracks. So we thought it was important that the bid be reviewed and approved. And then we make the right financial decision based on which parking lots are going to be put back in the ones that are construction or not by construction. So we've, we've been working with those companies to try and identify areas that we can add to it. The first one, as the middle school projects, project gets ready to happen, taking some pressure off of that parking lot and allowing some middle school teachers to perhaps park over at the board office. So I attempted to get these bids, um, in for the meeting this evening and it didn't happen. So because some of, we think they might be able to get to it before the school year starts. They'll shortly, finish shortly after the school year starts. So on the upper left-hand corner there, you will see current district parking. We have one, two, three, four, five spots and a handicap spot. So the thought is to take that white fence towards the board office and create twenty-foot stalls there, which would give us about five spots. Where the cars currently are would be the new drive line. And then you would create six spots to the left of where it's parked. So basically your building parking. The area to the left of that yellow line, which is now asphalt, would then be torn up and that would become free space. Um, so that gets us a little. Then we walked over to the other side of the building and that is a lot like St. Jemmy Elementary parking lot. It's very, very tight and you'll see, see the cars parked there. They have to back out. They pull it straight and they have to back on the ground. How Dr. Fleet did it in that vehicle, like.
Yeah.
All the way in the back and out every day. She didn't pick it up. I don't know. Um, so we started talking about the options over there. Could we expand that parking lot towards the daycare? Uh, there's a telephone pole there and wouldn't be enough room. So we walked to the back and one of them brought out, well, you know, we could take some of this space back here and really get ten parking lots. So if we could get everybody in the board office to park over on this side, then we could maybe have the two nurses, the nurse's secretary, uh, Mrs. Kindring is down there, perhaps the English language arts ladies, uh, who are all really, really close to the left side parking, we could get them to park over there. That would alleviate some of the pressure on the back parking lot into that construction stuff. In addition, we don't have any visitor parking unless it's on the street with the board office. And that's always an issue when we're having employees come in to fill out paperwork and they don't know where to park. We could actually identify some visitor parking in the future. There's always sub parking as well, those are. So just kind of wanted to give you a heads up that we are going out and engaging some contractors and getting some bids on these, uh, projects. In the consent agenda items, there was a fund transfer that was approved, uh, from Fund One to the Capitol Projects Fund. And within that explanation, uh, we should have to please associate with that, so.
I have a question or maybe a comment about the parking. So back twenty years ago, when I was in a school, there's parking along the road there on either side. I realize now it's no parking zone. I believe there might have been a child who was hit. Uh, maybe high school turned right there, which is no right sign there, which is go straight. Have we explored with the city about temporary lifting that for our staff to park alongside the street there? Will we be having to do some of these projects in the short term?
I don't know that the safety concern would outweigh.
Can parents pick their kids up there?
I was just going to say, don't they do parent pickup?
Yeah.
Now they can drop off if they pick up or not.
We have had some conversation about taking those items up. And perhaps doing a turn lane or perhaps moving the, uh, the two roadway lanes to the left and then on the right hand side, having that as drop off lane slash parking lane. Of course, that's a significant, uh, same district owns those islands. So that would be a conversation that we have to start out in the city as well, how that would affect language, sidewalk, so.
Is, is, could you move the temporary pickup of those kids? And, you know, starting the school here saying.
So you could.
Shuttle, I mean, you might make a pickup somewhere else or whatever.
That means maybe, or, or if we can parent pickup, pick up at three fifteen elementary parking lot, the buses are already cleared. The pickups at three fifteen, if you want to do parent pickup.
Are you talking about at the elementary?
Uh, middle school, really. I mean, basically having no middle school, see no middle school pickup. No pickup in the front of the building there. If they want to pick up someplace else, then, you know, obviously the elementary parking lot's full of buses until, instead of three fifteen, it can be three ten, whatever it is, I don't know. In the high school parking lot, you know, the kids are flowing out there. But you're going to leave you having to, and I'm not saying parking's an issue, because I've heard it's an issue. But, um, is that, is this a quick or solve? Because you can't put a parking lot in one month. Like, it's, it's, the construction's going to happen.
Right.
It's going to happen regardless. So do we just look to the city for a short-term fix until we can come to a long-term solution?
So just so I'm clear, the short-term fix is to approve parking at the front of the building and move pickup?
I mean, that's yes.
You mean. I was going to say, where, you're going to have to have a solid plan of where you're moving that pickup, because.
I think the problem I'm going to have is releasing that. All, all good conversations.
And I don't disagree with that, but I think if you're going to do it, April, they started, August, all states for school is, you tell your parents, say, this is how it's going to be. And maybe pickup is around and I realize there's, it's a tight. going to be, and maybe pickup is around, and I realize there's, it's a tight lane there, or it's all too, there in front of the school, that's tight there, but do parents need to come through there or something?
We've also, it's an excellent point, conversation, the next step is to sit down with Dr. Mercer and Mrs. Upman and talk about the challenges that they're facing, how they're going to approach their teachers, whether teachers can park or not, just giving them the expectation that there's a new challenge in that, and talking about possible solutions. So that is definitely an option. Another, regarding the parking lot, we've also talked, at least one of the contractors, about getting it framed out, and putting in a ground, and letting it settle, and letting people park on it, and doing it as a lot, and put it there, some time to come in the asphalt.
Okay. How about, how about the high school lot, with the kids around you? I know, you know, kids are sixteen, trying to, technically, throughout the year, is there room behind that where, you know, you're saying, take one more row for staff, I'm sorry, you guys walk to the course, especially your staff to the high school lot, where you can really get some of that paint, too?
I think that's all we need to do before.
Yeah, well, and that makes sense, I mean, if, because then you have time to do the parking lot.
Right.
Over a semester's time.
So excellent points, excellent questions, broken progress.
Okay.
Everyone keep listening to.
Yes. Well, yeah, I think this is going to have to happen. And maybe that's a better solution, if you can push some of your staff to the high school lot. Because I think that, I mean, middle school in theory would park right here, and high school in theory would park down there, and I realize some of the classrooms are right there, right here, but maybe it kind of makes sense to.
We have to.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that all? There's not more.
Okay, so now do we go to the motion to move to executive post again? Okay, but we've already had a motion on that, so I can't.
Give me a second.
Okay, so I'll add a motion, okay?
Oh, it's not in my agenda.
I, well, I don't see it.
Well, because we thought we would get the.
We thought we'd get, uh.
Okay.
We set our goals high.
Yes, so, but it does let me add a motion.
Okay.
Let me stop you just a second.
You bet.
The next district update, release of personnel changes, usually closed session. We usually approve that in closed session, do we need to have a vote to release that? It's there.
Well, I thought maybe I went back down to that after, but it, actually, there is no motion on it.
It's a motion.
Okay.
So I don't think we have to worry about that.
Well, we're kind of waiting for it.
Yes, a new format. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and add a motion there in, I guess I read the statute again. Okay. Under revised Missouri Statute six one zero point zero two one, I motion at the Board of Education Center, closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items of business: hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees; scholastic probation, expulsion, graduation of identifiable individuals; individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, except that this exemption shall not apply to names, positions, salaries, and lengths of service officers and employees of public agencies once they are employed as such, and the names of private sources donating or contributing money to the salary of the chancellor or president at all public colleges and universities in the state of Missouri, the amount of money contributed by the source, and records which are protected from disclosure by law. Jamie Glue?
Yes.
Erin Fosler?
Yes.
David Pova?
Yes.
Carolyn Diesel?
Yes.
Josh Gettinger?
Yes.
James Kirchner?
Yes.
Martha Reese?
Yeah.
Okay, carries seven zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you.